Right now, we are bleeding. This village is bleeding. If these residents knew the truth, they'd hit the roof.
So another chaotic board meeting last night in Dalton. However, during that meeting, two unfamiliar faces were seen sitting beside Mayor Tiffany Henyard.
Fox 32 has learned they are criminal defense attorneys brought to the meeting by Mayor Henyard, who is at the center of the federal criminal investigation. Dame Placco has the latest on the drama in Dalton.
Another wild night at the Dalton Village Board with a handful of residents being ejected for shouting at the mayor, who also continues to do battle with the majority of the village trustees.
So you got us into this mess, and now we're trying to salvage what we can to get out.
People that say things about me, I want you to prove it. Because like I said, fact versus fiction.
Sitting at the mayor's side in a place usually reserved for the village attorneys, two unfamiliar faces.
I didn't know them. A lot of my board members, they didn't know them either.
Fox 32 has learned this is Chicago federal criminal defense attorney Bo Brindley, along with his law partner Ed McDavid. The website for Brindley's law firm says, "Results matter: aggressive criminal defense." The two criminal lawyers sat next to Henyard the entire meeting, and even went into the board's closed executive session. What makes this especially notable is that Henyard is at the center of an ongoing FBI corruption investigation.
Our biggest fear is that she's going to use them for her criminal defense attorney and that the village is going to pay for it.
In a statement, Brindley, a former federal prosecutor, says, "Mayor Henyard retained me to evaluate the board's conduct and identify violations of municipal law." Mayor Henyard is charged with no crime. Brindley says he is not being paid by the village.
Why are you having a federal criminal lawyer sit next to you at a village board meeting? I mean, all I can say is, really?
Municipal attorney Bert Odelson, who represents the four trustees doing battle with Henyard, says the criminal lawyers had no standing to sit on the board, and paying them out of village funds would be illegal.
We have a lot of experience in Chicago that happens quite frequently that politicians get indicted. But they don't have the municipality that they work for pay for their criminal defense.
Also at the meeting, trustees fired Acting Police Chief Louis Lacy and several other Dalton employees, saying the village is bleeding money and needs to reduce payroll. In turn, Henyard fired her longtime village administrator Keith Freeman, who's believed to now be cooperating with investigations into village finances.
Keith Freeman is fired from the Village of Dalton. He no longer works here at the Village of Dalton.
On Thursday, former Chicago mayor Lori Lightfoot is expected to release her investigation into Henyard and spending here at the Village of Dalton. Sources telling me her report will find the village is millions of dollars in debt and may not be able to make payroll in just a few weeks.
Okay, good evening, everybody. How's everybody today? It's wonderful to see so many smiling faces and interested faces. And so we want to make sure that we keep the spirits up. We have a lot of information to report, so we're going to go get ready to convene our meeting. I'll ask first Clerk Keith for a roll call.
Good evening, everyone. Trustee Norwood?
Thank you very much. This meeting being properly called by three trustees, trustee House, trustee Belcher, and trustee Tammy Brown. We want to make sure we mark on the record, in the absence of the mayor, as the mayor is not present with us, I'm convening it as Mayor Pro Tem. And we want, and this meeting is properly called with 48 hours' notice. First, we're going to ask everybody to do the pledge. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, followed by prayer.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to say thank you all for coming out. As everyone knows, this information tonight, everybody has been waiting on. So good to see a lot of Dalton residents out, just because they want to know what's going on with their tax dollars. Please just give Mayor Lightfoot the respect. It's a wealth of information based on what was just given to us. And once we intake this information, please just work with us on our next steps of whatever we get. I just want, just let everybody know that at this time, if anyone was at the meeting on Monday, you guys see that we are in a financial crisis. And I want you to trust your trustees that we are working for you.
Hello, everyone. Happy Thursday. I would just first like to say that I am so happy to see everyone. You all know what they say, a family that stays together, a family that prays together, stays together, okay? So I'd also like to just thank our residents, right? Two Dalton residents. We know that these last three years have been a little difficult for us, right? We've had to make a lot of tough decisions regarding the town as a board. And I thank you all for trusting us, believing in us in the process, and knowing that we have a plan. We have a plan. I think that these last three years have made us stronger than ever before. I just want you all to know that I love you guys, and tonight is a good night.
One last thing, Mayor Pro Tem. We definitely want to thank Mayor Lightfoot for taking on, when I tell you, this devastating task. We thank her for taking on this task and helping not only the trustees, but also the residents. Thank you, Mayor Lightfoot.
Further acknowledgement to the hard-fighting Dalton firefighters who come and who show out every day for us through... We want to know the community loves you, and we appreciate everything that you're doing, and we are working hard to get you guys made whole and made correct. I will have a few other comments about the report. To preface the report and some of the things, we did make sure that it was an independent report. So the board was kind of giving some kind of snippets ahead of time, but we wanted to also maintain the integrity of independence. So there are some things we'll be seeing for the first time, some things we've had kind of a heads up to. But we all, but it's given us some direction, so I'll preface some more comments. At Monday's board meeting, there were also some actions voted on by the Board of Trustees that have left some, have left confusion or ambiguity, because the board has voted to begin some layoffs for budgetary reasons, and all of those have not been implemented at this time, or they're in various phases. So we are working with our attorneys. So I'll ask if Attorney McGrath can kind of also give an update to the community on what's going on there.
Couple of updates since the meeting on Monday night, which a lot of items were brought out, specifically the village's finances and why we're here tonight to go into more detail. But the board has decided to implement a hiring freeze. It was not able to be put on this agenda in time, but they want to know that, let the residents know that there's going to be a hiring freeze, that the village is just not able to hire any more employees in any department. There was some layoffs, and there's most likely going to be more layoffs unfortunately in the future. Since Monday's meeting, there's also been a number of instances of harassment in the workplace, threats to employees and elected officials. I have advised all staff and employees to document those incidents, and we are going to forward them to the Cook County Sheriff's Police Department, who by ordinance is the inspector general for the Village of Dalton. Once again, based on the board's directive, different individuals aren't following the board's directive. There was a deputy chief that was placed on administrative leave. He disregarded it and showed up the very next day. He then received a notice that he was terminated, and he, he... Despite being notified that he was terminated and in discussions with the Fraternal Order of Police, the FOP, he again showed up today. Once again, the mayor has changed the locks at the village hall. You all, everyone recall how orderly and how nice it was to walk into the village board meeting on Monday night when the Madam Clerk and the trustees had key fobs to get into the village. Once again, this is about the third time that she has changed the locks, so the elected officials do not have access and cannot get into the village hall, which belongs to the people. I got a call from an attorney this afternoon, who unfortunately says, "I have a couple lawsuits that I have to file against the village. It's been pending in court, and I can't serve the village, because I can't get to the clerk, because the doors to the village hall are locked." But the locks have changed. Emails were shut off, and I had heard that Mr. Lacy and others have brought in their own IT person in an effort to gain access to their emails that were shut down. I don't know the status of that, but there's a lot of stuff that happens really, really quick. Things happen every day. You just cannot believe what's going on with this administration.
Okay, and then we're going to cycle back to item C, which is the presentation and preliminary findings from former Mayor Lightfoot. I have a couple of comments. I didn't know if any board members had comments too before I segue to Mayor Lightfoot. So we, this process started, and the request started because for, I would say up to, at least up to a year, our administration, and more importantly, the residents, have not had the opportunity to know what's going on financially with the records in our town. We've also looked at the investigation into what happened in Vegas, and we were not able to get answers. While we are aware that there are FBI subpoenas and a probable FBI investigation, we have, we felt, we feel and felt the need for some answers that the community deserves, that this board deserves, and that in order for us to be on solid footing to make a plan. From what, from the pieces that I've seen, it mirrors exactly what we knew, was that we are in dire, in a dire financial position. That is something that I think as the numbers come, will be, can be extremely frustrating to the residents of this community, and we want to make sure that we are not, we are recognizing where we are and using this as a jumping point to where we, where we can, to get back where we need to be and to thrive. So we want to make sure that everybody's taking in the information. We deserve to know this information. Want to echo the sentiments of trustee Tammy Brown in saying, "Thank you for all of the hours and all of the hard work." Not too many hours, we put a cap on it. But I want to say, "Thank you" for all of the hard work that has been put into this. We noted this as a preliminary report, but we felt it very urgent that we share the findings, because we made promises to do this in a transparent manner with the community. So there still are some stages to go. I'm sure Mayor Lightfoot will talk about some of the hurdles and obstacles. But without further ado, I want to turn over to Mayor Lightfoot.
Can you all hear me just fine, and particularly the folks in the back of the room? All right. First and foremost, I want to just emphasize a couple points that trustee House and others have made. First of all, thank you to the trustees, to Madam Clerk, to Mike McGrath and Bert Odelson. This has been a challenging investigation, to say the least, because we have not received the level of cooperation from the mayor and her team that I would have hoped. Nonetheless, we've had, I think, a breakthrough that's allowed us to be here in front of you today to give you the information that I know the trustees for sure and the members of the public have been seeking for some time. But I do want to emphasize, this is just preliminary. We have more work to do. And as trustee House said, we believe that it was very important to come before the members of the public, so you would have some context for what the current state of your finances are as city government. As has been alluded to, I think there's going to have to be some tough decisions that are made, but you've got to make that with as complete a set of information as possible. And that's what this presentation is intended to do. Our work is ongoing, and we expect to finish with in expedited fashion. But as I said, we wanted to get to you as quickly as possible. A couple of, a couple of points, just so we're all, I'm not an accountant, and I suspect many of you in the room are not, but we will be covering some accounting terms, and wanted to just make sure that everybody had the same basic level of understanding as we go through these slides. We're going to talk about how the Village of Dalton handles its accounting system. We'll talk about in length, in detail, about the preliminary assessment of the financial status. We're going to go over what we've seen as increasing expenditures since 2021, unfunded expenditures, the current cash status, credit card use. Then we'll do a summary, and then we'll entertain questions from the trustees. So let me just jump right into it. Many of you know that the village, in the same manner as other municipalities in the state, accounts for its finances using what's called fund accounting. That means, that's just a fancy word of saying, the expenses and the revenues are divided up into specific buckets of dollars, and those funds are what we're going to be talking about. The village maintains three categories of fund. A general governmental fund, the proprietary fund, and a fiduciary fund.
So within each category, so within each category of funds, there are other, there are underlying funds that are used to account for resources that are for different purposes. The first category, governmental funds, includes the general fund, which is going to be the focus of our presentation this evening. And the general fund is what's used to account for the day-to-day operations of the village. Additionally, there are what are known as special revenue funds. These are specific funds for specific purposes. This includes the motor fuel tax and TIF money. The final governmental fund is debt service funds, where the village's debt obligations are accounted for, which is primarily the public bond debt. The final two categories of funds, which we will not be covering today, are proprietary funds, which account for transactions that are more business-in-nature, operations that should be funded by customer payments. That's the water fund, the sewer fund, and the fitness center. And the final are fiduciary funds, which are held for non-governmental parties, and that is the village's pension trust fund.
Certain financial disclosures are mandated under state law that the village reports to the comptroller of the state each fiscal year. Two documents that we're going to talk specifically about are the annual financial report, and you see the citation there, it's a state law, and the audited financial statements. The village has not, and let me repeat that, the village has not complied with these statutory requirements since fiscal year 2021. There's no annual financial report available after 2021, and no audited financial statements after 2021. So what that means is, the information that we're providing you has not been thoroughly audited by a CPA, but we do have information coming from an entity that essentially serves as the finance department of the village. Historically, from what we can tell, the village has had small or no full-time financial staff. Various times, even though statutorily, there's a provision for a city treasurer, none exists and hasn't for some time. There's a provision for a finance director. There's been intermittent people that have served that role, but that role has been vacant as of May of this year. And before that, the person who held the role started working part-time as of the end of December in 2023. So as you can see, given the lean or no financial staff, there's a lot of dependence upon the John Kasperic Accounting Firm, which has functionally operated as the village's finance department for some time. What we have examined are monthly financial reports from January of 2021 to May of 2024, produced by the Kasperic Firm. And as I mentioned, due to the village's failure to conduct an audited financial statement, there, we have to caveat the accuracy of the information, but we feel fairly confident, based upon lining out not only the month reports, but looking at bank statements that match up with the information that's in the financial reports. And we've had the opportunity to talk to some of the folks at the Kasperic Firm who are responsible for managing the finances of the village, and that work is ongoing. As of May 30th of this year, the village's general fund was in a net deficit position, meaning that there is insufficient funds in that general fund. As we mentioned, the general fund is used to account for the majority of the village's day-to-day operations, including payroll and vendor payments. The village's special revenue fund and debt service fund, however, are in a positive position, but each of those funds are restricted funds, meaning you cannot borrow from one to give to the other. And that is what's causing in part the financial crisis. What's next, you can see, is a graphic that depicts where we started as of April, where the village started as of April of '22, with positive of $5.6 million in the general fund, and where we are as of May of 2024, which is a negative $3.65 million.
Mayor Lightfoot, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just kind of as a summary now, just quick numbers. So in a two-year span, we're talking about a $9 million swing, or $9 million of deficit over that course of time. Would that be close accurate?
Turning now to the increasing expenditures of the village. Over the last three fiscal years, the average monthly expenditures of the village have increased by nearly 30%. As you can see in the graphic, in fiscal year 2022, on average, the village spent about $1.9 million a month. But in the last fiscal year, that amount had climbed to $2.5 million. These increasing expenditures have not been accompanied by corresponding increases in revenue. Again, as you see in the graph on the blue bars, the revenues have remained relatively the same over that time period, just over $24 million, while expenditures have climbed from $23 million in 2022 to $30 million in 2024. Ultimately, in fiscal years 2023 and 2024, expenditures exceeded revenue. Specifically in 2024, it was over $5 million more in expenditures than revenues. To look further at the increasing expenditures, the table on the screen highlights the two village departments that are the main drivers of this spending increase. The general administration and administrative compensation department and the police department. There have been increases in general administration spending in nearly every area, but there are a handful that stick out the most. As you can see on the first line, the largest driver of this increase is a more than double change in liability insurance cost. It's gone from $1.2 million in fiscal year 2022 to $3.2 million in fiscal year 2024. Other areas where we see large increases are miscellaneous expenditures, settlements, legal fees, and telephone.
Let me just add regarding the legal fees. These are, everything that we're representing to you tonight are things that have been booked in one of the general ledgers or otherwise. We know that the legal fees that have been booked so far are underestimated, because there are a number of legal fees that have yet to be paid. And obviously, with the litigation that's been filed, particularly by vendors who have not been paid, those legal fees will definitely, this is a very conservative estimate of what those fees actually are. Let me drill a little bit down also in what we're seeing so far with the police department. Those expenditures have increased approximately 21% since FY '22. Some of that is obviously driven by the union contracts and making sure that there's retro pay and that the police officers are compensated according to the collective bargaining agreement. Within the police department expenditures, categories with large increases include overtime, other miscellaneous expenses, and I will tell you, we don't know exactly what that is, but we're working on impacting that, unpacking that, contractual services, other professional services, and medical insurance. We wanted to highlight for you, particularly given overtime, what we saw as two outliers in officers. Officer Terry Young and Officer William Reed. Both of these individuals, in the last two years, have earned more in overtime than their base compensation. And you can see these numbers here. Officer Terry Young, in FY '23, earned $194,290 total, given the base salary and the overtime. And then often, and then in FY '24, that increased to $227,351, combining the base salary and the overtime. Officer Reed, for FY '23, had a total earnings of $145,450 in officer, and in FY '24, $192,732. We thought it also important for you to know that Acting Chief Lacy has accumulated overtime. It's our understanding that he is not part of the collective bargaining unit and has not been for some time, which under normal circumstances would mean that he is not entitled to overtime. But as you can see here, for FY '22, FY '23, and FY '24, and in, we're now in fiscal year 2025, through those four years, he's accumulated $215,747,000 just in overtime. Based on the records that we have reviewed, since March of 2023, the village has been unable to pay all of its monthly expenditures with available cash balance. Since that time, nearly every month, a portion of the checks approved and printed have been held by the village due to unavailability of funds. Per records from the John Kasperic Firm, as of June 18th, 2024, there are 589 checks totaling over $6 million that have been approved, printed, but not transmitted to vendors.
All right. We'll turn now to discuss the cash status of the village. So the village has 22 different bank accounts. A majority of those bank accounts are designated for the special revenue funds or bond escrow funds, so the money in those bank accounts is restricted and shouldn't be used for day-to-day operations. I'll also note that these 22 accounts don't include the pension assets. The pension assets are held in separate trust accounts. Most of the village's expenditures each month are paid from one main operating bank account. As of June 30th, 2024, that bank account had a balance of $715,000. As of April 30th, 2021, that account had a balance of almost $1.5 million. So a decrease of over $750,000. In addition to the main operating account, historically, the village has held its excess cash in an account known as Illinois Funds. Illinois Funds are interest-bearing accounts that are managed by the Illinois Treasurer's Office that allow municipalities to earn interest on their excess cash balance. The balance in the Illinois Funds account as of June 30th was only $3,900. As of April 30th, 2021, that balance was over $2 million. So the balance of excess cash has dropped by over $2 million in that time period. The monthly financial reports include a summary of the unrestricted cash balances of the village each month. Within these summaries, the balance reflected already accounts for those held checks that Mayor Lightfoot was just discussing, checks that have been issued but haven't cleared because they haven't been sent yet to vendors. What you can see on the chart is that the unrestricted cash balance of the general fund has dropped from almost $5 million as of April of 2022, and it is now, accounting for all of the checks that have yet to be sent, is now in a deficit position of over $5.5 million as of May of 2024.
We, we thought it was important... We thought it was important to give you a little bit of insight into credit card use by village employees. We do not have complete information yet. It is our hope that we will get further cooperation and be able to have a complete picture of credit cards, but we wanted to share with you what we do know so far. We are aware that over this time period, from 2021 till the present, the village used six different credit cards at various points, from January 2021 through May of this year. Four American Express cards that appear to have been used by various folks within the police department. The statements for these accounts were addressed to Ernest Mobley, Robert Collins, and Louis Lacy. All we know is what we've seen in the paper so far. We have not interviewed any of these folks to get a better understanding of the specifics around credit card use. We have some knowledge of that, but we'll share that as part of the final report. There's one American Express card for which statements are addressed to Keith Freeman, the village administrator, and there was one fifth third card which statements are addressed to the village. We've been told that that card is no longer in use. We understand from the records we've received from the Kasperic company and interviews that we've conducted that receipts for credit card purchases are rarely provided. Further, we understand that the credit card balance, because it comes due, of course, every month, we all know that, is paid as a matter of course, and it is reflected in the accounting records as miscellaneous police department expenditures. We're looking into what is the reason and rationale for that, but what this means is that these credit card bills that are paid do not appear on warrant lists and are therefore not presented to the board for approval. Again, that will be a recommendation that we make, and the board is obviously aware of this issue, which is in part why they took the action that they took the other day to rein in the credit card spending. We also understand from the Kasperic company that the only time a credit card charge would be reflected on a warrant list is if a receipt is provided, and as I've said, our information is that the receipts are rarely provided. I want to highlight a couple of credit card purchases. You're having the same reaction that we did when we saw this. So in particular, we were very concerned to see the top three purchases that were highlighted for you that were booked on January 5 of 2023. That's roughly $40,000, little more than that, in credit card purchases on Amazon in the same day. And our understanding, and our understanding is that the village does not have an Amazon account. These are somebody using one of the credit cards and charging these amounts using your tax dollars. We suspect we're going to see, as you can see, expenditures at Target, Walgreens, Best Buy, a number of charges that raise questions in our mind, are these legitimate purchases using the credit cards? What we've also found in the credit cards, I know that there's been a lot of interest in travel, and we are highlighting here on this slide some of the travel that is reflected in the village credit cards. Birmingham, Alabama, and Montgomery, Alabama, in March of 2023 with five known travelers. Washington, DC, in 2023 with four known travelers. Las Vegas, Nevada, with eight known travelers. Jackson, Mississippi, in June of 2023, with three known travelers. Austin, Texas, in July of 2023, with three known travelers. Portland, Oregon, in July of 2023, with four travelers. Central and Southern Illinois, in September of 2023, I think you're aware of what happened during that time, 10 hotel rooms booked during that travel. Traveled to New York City in October of 2023, one traveler. Atlanta, Georgia, in November of 2023, one traveler, on the village's credit cards. And I caveat that because we will, and are continuing to look at, I'll say, cross pollination between the village and the township and the credit card use there as well. Let me summarize for you kind of where, what we presented, what we found so far regarding the finances. The general fund is used to pay the vast majority of the village's expenses, as you heard. As of May 31 of this year, the fund had a negative balance of 3.65 million. The village's general fund expenditures have exceeded revenues the past two fiscal years, ending April 30, 2023, and April 30, 2024. As of June 30 of this year, the cash on hand in unrestricted accounts is insufficient to cover the held checks valuing $6.1 million. We are in the current fiscal year of FY 2025, and the village has no budget that's been passed this year. The village's financial records have not been audited since FY 2021, and the village has not filed the mandated state annual reports since FY 2021. So where are we in terms of next steps? Regarding the financial information, there's a lot more work that we need to do, as I indicated. We've just recently got a lot of information in the door that is reflected, for the most part, in this presentation, but there are other things that we have asked for, and we're hoping that we're going to get further cooperation from the Kasperic accounting firm. Additional details regarding credit card spending and any receipts that might exist, detailed accounting records and reconciliations, check registers, which is important, detailed accounting of interfund transfers and balances. What we're seeing, and we need to really look at the detail here, is that there is a transfer from one fund, in some instances, these are restricted funds, into another fund and vice versa. Additional detail, we're looking at what are the financial policies and practices in place and whether or not those need to be changed, updated, or beefed up in any way. We are continuing to look at what happened in Las Vegas. There are two trips, one in May of 2022 and a second in May of 2023, and as I alluded to earlier, the relationship and the intermingling of funds and personnel with Thornton Township is something we're very focused on as well. We defer to the trustees.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Mayor Lightfoot, her colleagues, as well as our legislative attorneys as well for the time and effort put into that. So again, I'll ask for a round of applause for the work that's been done. I'm gonna defer to any of the board members, see if there's questions of the report as it has been presented. Okay, I'm gonna turn over to Trustee Norwood.
There was a lot to digest there.
Yes.
I just want for the residents that, because I know sometimes there are a lot of residents that still don't understand. For us trustees, our job is to oversee the finances. For the last three years, I know it looks as though there's been a lot of fighting, but we've been fighting for transparency so that things like this won't happen. We were locked out of my viewpoint maybe about a year or two ago. Once we did start sharing the receipts and the information with the residents, they stopped that.
Yeah, I know it took everything in my soul to sit here and stomach this report. As we've been saying, and I'm gonna refer back to Trustee Norwood, anybody that has watched the meetings, I said, the checks that's sitting on the desk, that ain't been cash. Nobody has to come to a board meeting and tell a lie about anything. It's common sense, it's simple multiplication. When you have people emailing you every day about their invoices and payments, this goes as far back of June 9, 2022. It's sad, it's sickening. People came last month when we got our tax bills in an uproar about the tax. Can y'all imagine when we do take initiative to even start straightening this out, how our tax bill is gonna look? Mayor Lightfoot, I'm so grateful for this information that you provided, because it takes somebody else to come in to show that we've been trying to stop this, and we've been doing minimal damage. So could you imagine if we just sat up there and approved everything that was going on? Because she gonna ride off in her BMW, and we'll still be here stuck. We have been financially raped. And when people rape people, they get anything they deserve. I'm just gonna say what I've been saying for months and months and months. The bag been empty in 2022. The bag, it was never anything in the bag, and you still continue to say, they're lying, they're lying, they're lying. Here is proof for everyone to see, and even the ones who doubt us. If you don't see through this, there's nothing I can say to you. Even last week, sitting with Mayor Lightfoot, it's a punch in the gut. As the lady said from out of town, you've been hoodwinked, you've been bamboozled. Led astray. All of that, and for a person to sit there and constantly lie, 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 every board meeting, I don't say much because I just can't see how the girl tell them lies like that. It's unbelievable for a person to say that and for people to believe. So we thank God for Mayor Lightfoot's being here today, her presentation. Now, if this doesn't open up the eyes to these residents and let us know what the, as we say, the black jobs mean black vote, everybody, tell somebody. February of 2025, clean house. Clean house.
I just want to share a couple of final comments with you all. I know how I felt when I started seeing these numbers, so I can imagine how all of you are feeling after all this time, being in the dark. And I just want to let you know that this isn't just a job, this isn't just some task. We feel this, and so we have worked very, very diligently, very hard under difficult circumstances to get as much information as we could to share with you. You may hear a number of things in the coming days, but what I can assure you is, the information that we have shared, that we're putting our names on, is drawn directly from the financial records of this village. We wouldn't be here sharing this information, advising the trustees and talking with legislative counsel if we didn't have confidence in the numbers. There are a number of other things we know, but we aren't ready yet. We gotta verify them 20 ways from Sunday, but this, if you hear, this is fake news, it's not real, no. This is real. The last thing I'll say is, we figured that folks would probably want to take a little time to study these numbers in a little more detail. We have 100 copies of this deck that we will leave, paper copies, so after the meeting is over, you can feel free to come get them, first come, first served. Don't worry, media, we've already shared the electronic copies with you all, so you should have that. But again, thank you, thank you for showing up for yourselves and for your families and for your community.
We're gonna pause briefly to give Mayor Lightfoot and our attorneys a moment to exit, and then we're gonna make some final comments from the board in terms of next steps, and then we will open for citizens' address.
Greetings, everyone. In view of tonight's report, I think one thing is apparent. Since Thornton Township has been used to launder money, commingle funds, and things of that nature, I think it's a long time that we start going to their meetings also and that we start working together, trustees to trustees, citizen to citizen. We have to find a way to rid our village of that malignant, malevolent administration that we now live in. And I do have a question, do any of these things, if proven, does any of this stuff rise to the level of criminal? I don't know who might know that, but that's got to be, if they can get a guy for selling $10,000 out of a bank or something embezzling, this is embezzling on the grand scale. That's pretty much all I have to say right now.
So I'll give a quick response. We feel that, we feel that it does rise to the level of criminal. All information received in our report and further reports will be turned over to all authorities relevant to make a final determination.
This is to every resident of the Village of Dalton that is here and not here. This is to let you know, this is not fake news. This is real. And to all the residents that seem to think that this is not real, you need to get a copy of this. To all the residents that think, oh, she's doing a great job, and she's giving this party, and we're going to get hot dogs, and they're giving the kids Easter baskets and televisions and CD players and laptops, that's our money. It ain't her money, it's our money. And free 99 ain't always good. So I implore every resident that seems to want to go to every event that she does, stop going. Stop going. Don't support nothing that she's giving.
Greetings, greetings, residents. Former trustee Edward Steve, to the media, to the cameras, to the YouTubers, we've been known for these chaotic board meetings over the last few months, so that they think that's all Dalton is. Look how smooth this meeting was today. Look how calm, professional. That's not what Dalton is. This is what Dalton is. So when y'all see this news media, and when y'all see how special, how smooth this meeting was, know that this is Dalton. The other meetings is not Dalton. This is Dalton. I want to say also, it's for years, they've been saying, every meeting, they don't want to pay these people, pay the people, pay the people. How come Stan Brown ain't here today? He been saying, pay the people, pay the people, and we've been saying, no, they don't have the money. So now it's vindication when you sit there and get berated over and over again, and people come to you and say, how come you don't pay the people? Why are you holding up the vendors? This shows you that she's been lying the whole damn time, the whole damn time. So I thank y'all, I thank you trustees, and clean house 2025.
Good evening, everyone. I've got two, I've got two questions and a comment. We love you guys, this is our future, but don't forget Ed Steve. My question number one is, how many people in this audience are not, not registered to vote? How many people in this audience know someone who is not registered to vote? Well, it's obvious they're out here, we're all registered, and I guarantee you, we don't all vote. We need to change that.
Now that all of this information has come out, and I see how much the trustees love the residents and this village, I think this is gonna be my home. love the residents in this village, I think this is going to be my home. I'm going to be a Daltonier. Because I've come to the point that I don't just vote because you're just black. We have to start doing our due diligence and start researching the people that we actually cast our votes for. We can no longer just take handouts and because you're my favorite or because I like you, we have to literally start doing our research. And for those of you that voted for Tiffany, I'm just going to honestly say, you might not like me, you just didn't do your research. I mean, you can honestly look at this chick and see that there was an issue and that there was a problem.
It's really ironic with all the stuff that's happening, and I just bought my house, it was night, I couldn't just sell it and move somewhere else. So I am so very glad that we are getting to the point where we're getting this taken care of.
I want to thank everybody, we're going to be adjourned, so I think trustee Belcher have a motion to adjourn. I hear the motion, the second, clerk key, please roll call.
Trustee Norwood. Trustee Tammy Brown. Trustee House. Trustee Belcher.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:13 PM.
I want to thank everybody, hope to see you soon, it's great to see you.